So that was the reason for many. So now everybody can stand for the flag. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, as I set, we already did the approval and amendment of the agenda, so we move on to public comments. And at this time, we'll entertain a public comment. This meeting is held in public according to open meetings law. It's not a public participation meeting. The board, we got you to vote in public. Please come to the front table and state your name and address for the fourth clerk's record. We ask you to leave comments for three minutes or less. At this time, does anyone like to make any public comment? And I will move on to our student representative report. We have Jack Kane. Jack is involved in golf lacrosse, summer ski team. He's applied to post university, Connecticut, Walsh University, Clarkson County University.
Yeah, so just to be brief, I'm representing my school. I'm a senior this year. So start off with academic information. Recently, we had our math team yesterday, was our first meet of the year. It was held home in our school. And we won for the small school section. We had 80 kids competing, which is extremely hot for the amount of kids in our school. Everybody's kind of embracing it. It's a good opportunity for you to get some extra bonus points in the classroom while I'm kind of doing that. It's only about once every three months, maybe two months. So it's not a huge commitment, but a lot of it, myself and a bunch of our friends are doing it and doing it at a good time. So also Senior Project kickoff has been over the last couple of days this week. And Ms. Tombido had us all come into the pack and gave us our how-to guides onto that. We all saw it, it was about 90 pages. So that was a little overwhelming for some of us, but still, we're all kind of eager to take on that challenge. Last Saturday, a lot of us seniors and some juniors sat down and took SATs. Personally, mine, I think, didn't do so high because I had worked till 12:30 the night before, so it was a little exhausting, but still got through it and hopefully all the scores turn out okay. And juniors have PSATs next week, so that's mandatory for everybody taking to high school. It gives you a good jumpstart on these college search and stuff. So also, we had our developmental assets program with our first meeting, and they take students to Casey Park, and I'm sure you're all informed on what that is and about everybody's developmental assets of how to be more confident and more successful in your learning. And also to athletics, we have our soccer teams that have been very successful this year. Had in the sectionals, we have a couple of games left. I think the girls have lost one game and the boys have lost three. And all of them have been out of league games, so I think we're pretty close to winning league championship for that. And the girls are also on the brink of that. I think they have helmet coming up next week for guys and girls, and it's supposed to be football Friday night, so if you guys want to come out and see those games, it'll be fun to watch. One last thing, kind of off athletic and academic, but we have German exchange students coming in for a two-week program. We did this two years ago, and I had a couple of friends participate in it, and they really had a good experience. It's kind of, they came over here for two weeks, and we also sent kids to Germany for two weeks to stay with host families. And those kids just kind of had a different cultural experience and sort of seen that a little bit. So that's pretty much it from my school.
We'll see you in March, we're Senior Project day.
Jack, if you'd like to report back, you can also tell, because we've been to the Senior Project, just tell the kids that a lot of things we hear after they do, when they're doing Senior Project, is some of you's procrastination, they don't get it done, or time management skills. So this also allows out there to people, and maybe it'll help them with their Senior Project.
Thank you.
You're not up there at those soccer games in the corner of the bleachers doing all that hootin' and howlin', right?
I'm in the student section. Personally, I like to keep it more positive than some of the other kids up there. It has been tough this year. From around Stanford, we need to get a bunch of kids up there, so it's been nice.
You gave us a very good report, I'm going to tell you.
Thank you.
And anytime you feel comfortable, you need me to go give you your homework.
All right.
All right. This time, we'll go on to board member comments. If anybody would like to say anything.
I do, I have a couple. Since we haven't met since homecoming, one of the things that I probably, is when I hear comments from outside our district. We were all at homecoming, I don't know if we stayed long enough. Joe saw me standing in line for half an hour for hamburger, and I delivered two of her, she already had one. But in that line, kids passing through the lines, going through, back and forth. I was counting, and I lost count of probably about 40 something kids, every one of them. Excuse me, excuse me, can I get through? Excuse me, pardon me. And the people in front of me were from ER. And a woman commented, she goes, "I've never been to a place where all the kids that I interact with, the manners of these kids." So that was a bright spot for me then, this football field.
It's sad.
Friday's been tough. Then I have another, just hearing the all-around climate from different people railing up, it's nice to hear. And then I have a compliment for Mr. Calvin. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to go see young ladies in a cheerleading competition, but it is, it's different. You'd think everybody would be happy, but it's kind of weird. But one thing-
A little drama, is that what you're trying to say?
I would have never thought I would have gotten yelled at for clapping for kids who were not on our team. I did. Apparently, crowd participation is a thing, and you get graded for that. And I watched these little kids, my daughter's second, third, fourth grader flipping agents. "You can't clap for them, they can get points for that." Are you kidding me? I saw Tony earlier in the morning, and then Matt just showed up. And if you've ever seen a group of third and fourth graders, they're all kneeling, waiting for their award. "Dr. Calvin, Dr. Calvin." All of them, waving. I would guess that in the past five years, none of the kids would have known who the superintendent was, but then to watch you go over to the kindergarten first grade team, kneel down and talk about it, and then move to the next team, it was just, it would impress a lot of people that were sitting in the bleachers. So thank you for just being visual, because I surely would not have expected you to be there at 10:00 p.m. Saturday morning to watch the little girls yell.
Just be there.
To go along with what Jeremy just said, I went to the soccer game at homecoming, and I was very impressed with Dr. Calvin at the end. He stood out at the end of the gate as people walked out and greeted people. Thank you. That's just what this district needs.
I was just going to comment quick on homecoming. I did get a chance to go to the girls varsity soccer game on Saturday, and I had been the one, I think, the week before. And I was, actually, I love the student section with the participation. I literally took a lot of joy, not only in watching the girls crush their opponents, that was always fun, but I just as much enjoyed watching the students get so involved. I loved it. And I didn't hear anything that wasn't positive. So I was really impressed with the students and their behavior and how enthusiastic they were. So I loved it.
I just think homecoming's great. The parade was fun. Thank you Pam for the ride in the convertible. I never felt like a beauty queen before, but it was fun, it was a great game, even though we got scared. But homecoming is a, it just brought, I thought there were so many people there, win or lose, we were all there as a community. And I think Dr. Calvin's right when he says the school is the home of the community, and homecoming certainly proves that.
Let's move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, great, great. Well, thank you for the compliments. It's a pleasure. Let me tell you that things continue to really go very well here. I'm enjoying being here in Miami. We continue to implement entry plan activities that are spelled out in the entry plan. I'm almost there. Early November, I'll have some outcomes that I'd like to come back and share with the board and tell you what I've learned about the district since staying here on July 1st. You know, one of the things that we'll be doing, a couple of things that we'll be doing over the next couple of weeks, we'll have some parent forums, so we can sit down with parents, talk to them, and I'll share the feelings on the district. We're going to really spend a lot of time with our parents. Also, we'll be some student interactions, so I'll hit together with students, I'm going to be in cafeterias and eating lunch, and just really sitting down, bringing kids here to the district office, and just learning as much as I can from them as well. So we'll spend a lot of time with kids and with parents over the next couple of weeks. And also with community leaders. There are a couple of businesses I'd like to get out to, I have to pull up the max couple of folks. And I'll be going over to some of those programs to see how things are at those. So just wanted to spend time out there and continue to name about the district. And we'll continue to publicize those. And so if you hear about those going on, and you know the parents or kids that you'd like to send away, please send them away. We'd love to chat with people. In the spirit of doing the entry plan, one of the things that I've done is continued to go out and meet with community leaders. One of the folks I just met with this past week is Mr. Joe Pasher from UNE, Nuclear Power Plant. And Joe really was great. He invited me in to sit down and talk to him a little while. And we got to talk about the whole remaining nuclear power plant piece in terms of the future of today. And you know, he shared with me that there are still some challenges around the whole plan. They had a deal that they hoped would be signed off on and done within three months. It was 20 months later, and they still don't quite have the time. They're hoping that the best case scenario, they continue things until around 2017 in the spring. And if anything else great comes, it would be an 18-month additional extension. And so he's really working hard to try to get that piece done. You know, but yet still expressed that, you know, hey, we're not sure where things will go after 2017. So one of the things that he has asked is, is it possible to really connect with the community in terms of the school district community? What he would like to do, the board is entering this coming, at least for our next board meeting, is just share where things are. What he is desiring to do is to be very transparent with the community and just share, not only here, but across the board and the territory. And I think his goal is to really continue to have that ongoing dialogue, whether things goes out or they stay well, right? And so if the board is okay, I would be, you know, I would like to invite him, and he could just share where things are, and we get to hear from him. And he's asked that if we can keep the dialogue open and continue to build a relationship. He said to me, you know, "I've always wanted to reach out to the school, but I wasn't sure how that would go, and this is a really great opportunity, can I please do that? Would you be willing to do that with me?" And I'm sure that I would go back and share with the board, and we can go from there. So if you're okay with that, would you mind me having him on for a couple of minutes and just chat with you about the future, and you can hear where things are at least today? So we will do that, thank you for that for our next board meeting. But we'll continue, as I said, to meet with people from the community and just continue to learn and things are going well. So we are looking for the best. I wanted to talk a little bit about State Ed. Recently, I was up at NISCIS with all the superintendents from across the state, and had a great opportunity, got an opportunity to listen to the commissioner talk, and also meet the commissioner, this kind of meet. And just, here's some of the things that she was talking about, just some of the highlights from her message. She talked about the Common Core, and that they want to now do a study. So her department is going to do a study on the Common Core. And also, the governor is also doing a study on the Common Core, to look at a number of things. One, is the Common Core assessment, are those assessments appropriate? We know that there's some things that need to change on them. The developmental pieces, is the Common Core development appropriate from K through 12? And then, you know, looking at the future, where do we go with regard to the standards? So she and her team are doing that, and they'll be working on that, actually, within the next couple of months. We got a letter just yesterday afternoon asking for input from teachers. They'd like to get at least six to eight teachers, you know, from our region to go and be on this team with the governor, or with the commissioner, excuse me. And she's asking for names of the folks. We, I've already sent it out to our union, to our teachers, to see if they'd like to get involved. I think it's a great opportunity for us to have our voice in the process that's happening across the state, basically. So that's happening now. The commissioner has also talked about how she is going to be working closely with the governor. She's actually going to be on his commission as well, to try to also have input in the process. She talked about the tests that are out there. Our current tests are done by Pearson. Next year, the test will be done by a different company, I believe it's Test Care if I remember correctly. What they had hoped to do was try to change the tests that they put this year, but it's just too soon, so they're going to continue with the same Common Core test this year. And by this time next year, there would have been double the amount of teacher input in the process, and they hope to have a brand-new test in place, basically. However, with this year's testing, we're going to see fewer test questions. The test won't be as long, and some of the items will be, you know, a little bit more revised, basically. So hopefully, the testing process will be a little better this year, even though it's not with new vendor, as we're going to get next year. She also talked about the park assessments. We currently do paper and book tests, and what they'd like to do is be able to get information back to districts a little bit faster. And this full-term Common Core, sounds like what they're looking to do is get rid of the term Common Core, because it's so political size, and so they have it on front of test books, and it's helped, just caused so much trouble. So they want to actually start to implement over time, this piece called Park Assessments. Park tests are really, they're computer-based exams, so kids go take the test on the computer, and then you can get the results back instantly, basically. They have actually asked every district across the state to at least have one school piloted out this year and see how it goes. I actually did park assessments in my last district, so I've seen it happen before. And you do get, you know, instant results back. It is fairly, it's not difficult. And actually, I think here it would be okay, because many of our kids are online doing star exams now, so they're already doing computer-based testing. So, you know, we would be, I believe, very ready to do that. We have one school that is going to pilot those exams, for example, he is the school that will be doing that. So she did talk about doing online testing, doing the review of pencil testing in the near future. And then she is going to be putting on a toolkit, a communicate about the annual board, and also her review. One of the things she's going to be asking parents and staff to do is to actually do a review of the standards. So she's going to have all the standards. You'll get on the computer, you'll go to her website, and the standard will pop up, and the people will be able to give feedback on the standard, right? What they have noticed is that many people are complaining about this Common Core learning standards, they don't even know what these standards are. So they're going to actually put the standards out there and ask people to give them feedback on what they think about the standards themselves. My opinion is personally, I don't think it's a standard issue, right? I agree with all the standards. I think there are two things. One, I think the tests are very challenging, and we need to look at that and make sure that we have appropriate testing. I think we may have to shift with regard to what's taught at what point, what part of year. But then the third piece is this whole piece around evaluation, like the evaluation piece. We need to make sure that some of the rhetoric around it, that has happened over the last year, we bring that down, the fight between State Ed and the teachers and the whole piece. So we'll be looking and watching to see what happens over the next year. It should be very interesting. I'm sure that was.
It's not. It wasn't, it's old.
So we'll look to see what happens over the next couple of months, and we'll keep you informed. Superintendent's Conference Day, so there is a flyer in front of each of you about tomorrow's Superintendent's Conference Day. We have two speakers coming in, who will be working with our staff around our goal of making sure that we lessen the instructional gaps for all students. Both are people who specialize in working with kids with disabilities, kids who have behavior difficulties, kids who typically go underserved in districts. And so they'll spend time with our entire staff, we're very excited. Everyone will be on the one group in the performing arts center, and we'll spend time working as a whole team and then doing some instruction. And then where do we go from here after receiving the professional development? Please feel free to stop by, we'll be having a lot of fun. Superintendent's Conference Day, beginning of the year was fun, but I think tomorrow will be even better.
Does show who to flash off, does it?
Oh, even better. We'll have a really good time, and at the same time, we'll be doing lots of learning. So tomorrow, that will be taking place. We have some website changes that will be coming. Our current provider, Power School, has been bought out, it's going out of business, so we have a new one that we, all districts using, that are now going to have to be using. Next companies are going to be working on this soon, so Amy, who wants to come up and share a little bit, she'll share the new design, and you know, our colors are still there, but some things will be, I think, a little bit easier for folks to navigate through.
So we are pushing it up a bit and making things more simple to navigate, hopefully. So you can see it. And I can show you, it's a template, and it's not 100% working, but it gives you the basic look and feel of the screen. Then we have our main stands all in the center, they're now all fitted with the top for people to access, and we'll clean up what's in them. Initially, what we're doing is transferring everything we have over to this template, and then we'll start to go and tweak and clean it up and get rid of some of the redundancy and just kind of compartmentalize certain things under each of the concepts. One of the nice aspects of this is we have, instead of the news and spotlight, we've gotten rid of that, so we don't have two sections for news. It's hard to fill, and people are getting confused as to where to go. We just have our news section right with our events, so people will see it right away. Also, what's nice about this is, on a lot of screens with our old site, you pull it up, and you see the top, but you never actually see the news unless you scroll. Some people miss it all the time and say, "Oh yeah, it's right under our news section." It's cool then. But this really, I think, will be easier for people to navigate and get around. Some nice clean design, if you click on the links, it works similar to how our site is now. You can add messages, another nice aspect. If we can post videos, much easier, and have them in our news section, under our actual department section, that kind of thing. We also will have RSS feeds, which, so if people subscribe, you'll know if the calendar is going to change immediately, because you can subscribe to that feed, and you'll know if we post new news immediately. You're going to have to keep checking to get notifications. Really, it should be very nice.
What's in the company, though?
It's Next Companies. And they're actually the provider that we've had prior to this. Someone bought them out, but they still have come back and reinvented themselves as a smaller local company. That's the other nice thing, they're local. So they really are very helpful, and I email back and forth a lot, and talk to them all the time, and write questions. And now it's a little hard for us to do that with our agents. Kathy and I know whenever we have questions, we're developing answers with our own site.
Questions are there, no point.
When do you anticipate this happening, Amy?
Well, you can do it anytime. So I could call them up, and we have plans going next week, or we could wait a little while, we could wait until the holiday weekend, because people tend to, if it's been changed, be prepared a little. So what I'm thinking is next week, we have a technology community meeting, and we'll talk about it, and then we can actually plan our rollout date.
So we'll be back by the next board meeting, honey. Go ahead and roll it out. We certainly want to make sure parents know it's coming before they get started and go to the site, and then they're confused. So we'll roll it out over time.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing different as far as the user is concerned. It's when you decide that the servers are changed over, you know?
So we, by next meeting, we'll, you know? Thank you, Amy. So the other two pieces I have for you, board. One is around auditing. So Matt and I, and Ron, and Ken, we talked a little bit about our auditing committee. And one of the things that we'd like to do is really support the auditing committee, and there is a really awesome opportunity available to us. Dr. James Merriman's is a real expert in auditing, and helping folks to understand what the purpose is of the auditing committee, how to look at the evaluations that come out of auditing. And really, he's spent a lot of time in school fiscal navigation. And he, as Matt and I were talking, we were looking for resources as to how we might, in ways that we might best support that auditing committee. And so I shared with Matt this information, and Dr. Merriman would love, Merriman rather, would love to come and help or support us with our auditing committee. If he were to come, what he would need is a Saturday, and my suggestion would be that we actually invite the entire board, because at any time, any of you could be on the auditing committee, and it would give you some real strong oversight as to how the committee should operate, and dos and adults. And if doable, what he'd like to do in terms of an agenda is, he would like to start with a self-narration in terms of how will you feel around the auditing pieces in the district, then go into legal requirements around the auditing committee, then go into talking about the auditing committee's charter. There is a charter that does need to be in place. We do have a charter, and he would spend time talking about what should be in that charter, and how that charter should be, you know, looked at periodically by the board, and the information that should be on it. And then he'll deal with the duties and responsibilities around the external auditor, the internal auditor, the administrative matters, the committee's functions around mission, decision-making process, reporting requirements. And then who can be members of this committee, spend time on that, and then the actual operations of the committee. So the notifications, the setting of the agenda, the decision-making, the dos and adults, and how all the things that happen in the auditing committee is be metted through the board. But many of those questions that sometimes board members have about finances and auditing, that they're not sure, is it okay to ask? He can answer those questions. Now, in terms of his background, he has been a school superintendent in two places. He is actually the executive director for the Superintendent's Development Program for Axonia Suiro. He actually presents for NISCIS, as well as for New York State School Boards Association. And he has been a school business administrator at the show. And he also has a number of other people that he brings with him, who have been out in the field as auditors. In fact, one of the posts that he would bring to this workshop would be from the Office of the State Councilor, who was also a former business administrator, we see both. And so what he'd like to do is come and support, and I think it would be great if he's with the board, if the board would be willing to attend. He would need a Saturday, Saturday, maybe number seven, 14th, or the 21st, I think it was. And about a half a day, we could, you know, get breakfast and get things set up, so that we could spend time with him and answer any and all questions you might have. If the board's willing to do this, another opportunity we have is that we can pay for this through BOSIS, as long as we invite other surrounding districts. So there might be a couple of other districts, we believe that there will be some others who'd like to come, and it'd be a nice way for us to connect with all the districts. And the cost would be very minimal, because you get back 70% of the way to pay for a workshop. The workshop for the full day would be around $3,000, and you get 70% of that, it would be reimbursable for BOSIS. So you're talking 1,200 bucks for an entire, for all of you, to really get that intimate personal professional development around auditing and others. And if we get others involved, we could probably take care of the costs amongst all the other districts, just to bring the costs even down for the class. So if the board would agree, I think it would be an excellent opportunity, if everybody's okay.
The auditing committee discussed this last year, the one session, and we approached, or I approached four college school boards to put this out, and they didn't have time. This passed the past year, and they told us that they tried to do it this year, but it didn't happen. So Dr. Calvin helped out fighting this person to do this. So the auditing is totally on board with this.
And more information about James, I gave you his resume, gave you things from the Superintendent's Development Program, and an outline for the piece. So if we're good, in terms of the date, would you like maybe the 7th, the 14th, or the 21st? What would work for you all?
I can't do the 7th. Why don't we use the other two?
You want me to send it out by email, and then we get feedback from everybody, and put Ron in the group too? So we'll send that out tomorrow? I had to go from there.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Anyone who's on that, maybe should be, should be definitely there for sure.
Matt, how would we invite other districts to kind of help out with that?
So I'm going to send out notes to all of the superintendents in our region, our way through the LECs, BOSs, and say, hey, listen, we have people, so let us know. And we'll tell you that, like so far, Superintendent's Conference Day, we're also doing that day through BOSs to get it reimbursed. And I sent a note out and the districts were very, very good. I think we have, Amy, was it five or six districts or Joe?
Six.
These six that will be participating tomorrow with us. So we're all working together. So I can tell you that people are, many people who are really hungry for support around the whole auditing, financing piece of this dress. So I think you'll have, you'll have a piece in the committee issues list and please let us come and do this. I think you'd ask for people.
Okay.
All right. Okay, and then the last piece that I have for me, I want to just make sure I share with you. I left on the table for you some regulations and procedural safeguards around the manifestation determination piece. So whatever we have to do that actually, you know, ends up suspended, who has a disability, you know, if they end up in a long-term suspension, there is a process that we have to go through to make sure that we can actually go further in terms of a suspension, right? So if a child has a disability, then you have to go to what's called a manifestation determination hearing, okay? So there's a team of folks that come together and they have two things that they have to look at. One, whether or not the child's IDP is being followed appropriately. And then second of all, whether or not the behavior that we see that has occurred, if it was a manifestation of the child's disability. If the behavior is a part of that child's disability, then what happens is you can't discipline further, right? The hearing process stops. And then the child, the CSC has to immediately become me. They have to look at whether or not they have to do what's called a functional behavioral assessment to figure out if there are things that, what's the function of the behavior? And they should consider what other interventions should be in place for that child to prevent this kind of behavior from happening again. If there is no function, if there is no manifestation of the disability, then you can go ahead and discipline the child like you would any other child. So I just wanted to give that to you all as an informational piece because I know we recently had some questions around that and I wanted to make sure that everybody had that so you can see if the rest is all. Any questions on that? And then just lastly, I'm going to let Greg talk for a minute. We have two things coming up, the building condition survey. And we just finished up with our external audit, so want to share a little bit?
Yes, item number one, building condition survey. This is a report that is due by school districts to the Office of Facilities Planning and State Education Department. And I believe this goes over five years. These districts will work with their architects to go through and fill this report out and send it in. Basically, the report reports to the state, the condition of our facilities, infrastructure, borders, roofs, things of that nature. The state created this in attempt to, for them to receive better information so that when districts submit for a capital project, if items are on there that aren't building conditions or that they might not get aided. So it's a way for the state to kind of know what's coming down the pipe and what they might be in store for as far as paying out and building it. So if the board recalls, we had some struggles with our existing architect last year and the superintendent, Mr. Carol Vadi, recommended bringing in a new firm to work with Pastrow Associates. We signed a contract with them just for the building condition survey. We thought it would be very appropriate to try them out through this process and then if things went well, then, you know, there might be a further discussion. We also thought it was a good thing, stopgap until the new superintendent came on board. So he could have input into, you know, what we do as far as choosing the school architect. So Bob Miller and I met with them this week. They will be out here tomorrow to start their walkthroughs. We should have a draft of the report by November 1st and it is due to the state by November 15th. So once again, our commitment with them for the school year is just for this, to, you know, to just give us a feel. They haven't done a lot of schoolwork and they're eager to get into that, that part of being the business. Mr. Carol Vadi had used them for certain things at Penn Field. So it was his recommendation to bring them in. I'm pretty sure he shared that with Tim and Ron as he was going through that process. We had them come in and had some meetings. So we're on board for that. We gave them, Bob Miller gave them a lot of information at our meeting so they could get started and they will come out tomorrow and spend probably half a day walking through, looking at things so they can start to put together the report.
Do you have a question on that?
Yes.
All schools have the same calendar for having this done as everybody's like due November 15th?
I believe staggered. You know, I'm not really sure, man. I think everyone's is due the same time though, but I really have to check.
Since they do a lot of schools, they have the time to do it.
Yes. Yeah, they know the timeframe.
They see the time.
Yes. Yeah. And one of the biggest challenges was they don't have any of our CAD drawings, but we were able to get PDF files to them of all the drawings from the last project from the chase. So they do have schematics on the computers to work off of. So we were able to overcome that hurdle, but they're very confident in the timeframe. We feel there's plenty of time.
Folks are keeping going through X, B, and X way that doesn't trust them to be part of our property.
You know, and I think if you look at the architecture, the AA contracts, I believe that, that we do have the right to those. I don't believe they're proprietary, but it started with the chase first. If that wasn't successful, there would have been a lot of tax. And I don't believe they would have given us a hard time with that, but the chase was able to come up with itself.
The PDS or the DXS, the digital system?
Right now, it's just the PDI.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
Yeah, no.
Format that they can work with.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's, that's another step down the road, but for now, they, they're able to work with, use what we're able to do now.
And board, with regard to the survey, once it is done, we will share with you all about the survey. We'll make sure that you all know what the survey's findings were. We'll come back and report out that information to you around that beginning of the time.
And then item two on tonight's agenda is the audit. This is really the external audit. Gray Wager's people have been in a couple of times. They were here again this week. They finished all their field work. They're back in the office tying some things up. By Tuesday, we'll get a list of what they call adjusting entries. As they go through the review process, sometimes there's some adjustments they need to make. There will be some adjustments for us. That's why when we talk about putting our financial information out there, that we put due information out there would not have been accurate because the numbers are going to change. So what I reported to you guys at, in August, for our financial position, that will change a little bit due to these adjustment entries and we'll be able to come back and share what we do exactly what the adjustments were. But, you know, that's one of our concerns because that information is tentative and so you go through the audit process. The audit is due to the state by November 1st. So we are still on track to get everything done. Typically, what happens is after the adjusting journal entries, then they create a draft report. They send that to the district for review to make sure that it looks accurate. Once we tell them it looks good, they will then finalize the report. They send copies to all of the board members. Mr. Wager will come in and review the report with the audit committee and then the audit committee does the recommendation to accept the report. During that timeframe, while all that's going on, they do send the report down to state at the end of November 1st timeframe. And then if there are any changes after the fact, we can all send down a number of reports. But we are on track, you know, to have everything done on time and we just wanted to give you an update on for that process.
So we want to present in the United States, November?
Yes, I would assume at the November meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And that's, any other questions at all, board? We're all set. Thank you.
All right, move on to board business. Just got a couple of things there. I'll need that promotion approved to amend the April board meeting date. So we need the, in line with BOSs, vote date on there. So I need a...
Is that already on Wednesday or we got to change it to a BOS change?
We're changing the date.
Best we have.
I think we're...
Right. BOSs had one day, we had one day, but BOSs came back and said, hey, we're changing it to this date to BOSs. We need to change that, the meeting, amend the meeting date.
That Wednesday was. It was the 20th. We're changing it to the 27th because we got notified and BOSs said that was the vote.
Is the vote not the third week in May anymore?
No, no, the BOSs budget.
BOSs?
Oh, okay. They always vote on a Wednesday and had then the calendar would have rolled to the 20th when we approved it. Then they send out a notice and said it's the 27th.
Okay.
Okay, need a second.
Who made the motion?
Dennis.
Okay.
Second, yeah. Any more discussion? Any law in favor? Any polls? The second one, need a motion approved that Team One was getting on the campus position for the indoor track and the swimming. Carla? Phil? Any discussion? All in favor? Any polls? Moving on to our consent agenda. Any motion approved the consent agenda? Carrie? Dennis, second. Any discussion?
What was the gift? I'm sticking with it. I just like that it's written.
Plaque from supplies, extra total notes.
Mary, sign the letter. Thank you.
Yes, it's, it's a gift of 114 from Marshall Brothers Incorporated and Pit Stop Management Team. The donation will be used towards the purchase of fashion supplies at Ontario Elementary School.
All in favor? All right. Move on to our committee reports. Jeremy, communication.
We had our first meeting tonight. We've come up with topics for our community conversations this year. We'll be meeting right before the first November board meeting, at 5:30 here again. And then we're going to hope to shore up some dates and get our plan together on how we want the conversations to run.
Audit meeting on the 15th, which is a week from tonight, right here, 5:30. Highlights in the meeting will be, EFP, Burger will be in and we'll go over our single audit and our list of stuff. That's, that's... Pretty much it.
Thank you. Phil, any follow-up? We had a policy meeting today. I just wanted to make sure that I bring attention to the board members. And you may want to review this for yourself and you may want to read it, but Policy 1510, just to reiterate that we can video conference in board members that are not present. And I know that Ron is not available tonight, but for future reference, just want to make sure that I draw attention and everyone is aware that if we do have a board member who's traveling on work or a pleasure and they do want to partake in the meeting, as long as we can see them and hear them and they can see and hear us, not only can they partake in it, but they can actually vote as well. Just want to make sure that I brought that, that brings attention. I'm sure everyone knows it, but I wanted to reiterate it. Last, our next meeting is November 5th, 5 o'clock, room 5B. I understand you're shifting to 5:30.
Yep. We were on 5:30 and...
We're going to be 5:30.
And we are 5:00 and we have been at 5:00 except for today that we all, so November 5th, 5:00, 4:00, 5:00. I will not have any more president candidates this evening. So I need a motion for Jeremy. Second, Matt. Any discussion? All in favor?